We still wait for more board members. Yeah, so we'll soon have, but yeah, at least we have a couple of meetings.
Glasses.
Yeah, exactly.
Hey Joe, good, how are you?
Hey Joe.
No, couldn't today.
Followed that.
No, it's fine.
One of the presenters just walked in front of me.
Yeah, he's stuck in traffic. Oh, that sign on sixty construction coming in the next three days, I wonder what that is.
Yeah, I didn't hit that, but I probably will do the next three days.
Yeah.
Well, that take minimal disruption to make round sixty.
Mm, not much. Talked to Jim today, he's gonna hopefully be here in the middle of this meeting or the seven o'clock meeting, but he was up in DC and ended at two thirty, so as soon as he can make his way back, he'll be here.
All right, good afternoon, I call to order this May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen workshop of the Palatine County School Board. Madam Clerk, if you'll let the minutes reflect that Mrs. Emel, Mr. Cole, Dr. Jones and I are present this evening, and Ms. Conca and Ms. Ayers are away on business, hopefully we'll be joined by Mr. Conca shortly. We have in front of us a draft agenda for the workshop. We have a quorum, is there a motion regarding the agenda or any changes necessary?
Mr. Chairman, to make a motion to approve our agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor approving the agenda, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. That takes us to the public comment period for our workshop. This is an opportunity for individuals wishing to address the board to come forward and be heard. There is a time limit of three minutes per individual and five minutes per group, with a total time limit of thirty minutes. We would ask speakers identify themselves by name and address, and please address your comments to the board as a whole, not to individual board members. Public comment period is open for our workshop this evening on May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. Once again, public comment period is open. All right, signal movement, I'll bring public comment period to a close. Dr. Jones, I believe we have some presentations this evening, sir.
We do, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. First item is a presentation on a solar power purchase agreement. This is something that the board has been exploring for the last year and a half or even longer. We began an RFP process in January where we went out to the public and looked for proposals to come back and went through that process with that Dr. Tibbs led, and we have selected a preferred partner to work with us on this solar PPA, and they are here to give a presentation today about what we are presenting. This is just information at this time, and certainly take the board's questions and comments, and if there is the sentiment to go forward, we would certainly look at bringing this back in June for approval to move forward. Dr. Tibbs, I may have stolen all your thunder, if I did, I apologize, but feel free to add anything you need to.
It's all good. Yes, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Jones. As he stated, we started this a couple of years ago. If the board will remember, we had a kind of a grassroots effort from the Science Olympiad students at Palatine High School come forward in the spring of two thousand seventeen, and we circled back to this following the completion of our capital projects with the transportation maintenance facility and the middle school. And so, we did an RFP, sent out on January the thirteenth, advertisements were placed in the Richmond Times Dispatch on January thirteenth and January the twentieth. Two companies attended a pre-proposal conference, and then two complete proposals were received as in response to that RFP. And then an evaluation committee received presentations from those two companies on March the eighteenth, choosing Sun Tribe Solar as hopefully the partner moving forward. Taylor Brown, who is a chief technical officer with Sun Tribe Solar, is going to present specific information about this purchase agreement. Taylor?
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, afternoon. Appreciate everyone's time today to talk about this opportunity. We're really excited to explore the Palatine County Schools' solar PPA. I'll give a little bit of background on solar PPAs in general, and then we'll get into specifics on Palatine, and then we'll open it up for Q and A. Wanna address any questions that might be out there. With that, I'll get into the presentation here. So, a little background on Sun Tribe, we are the largest PPA provider in the state of Virginia. We're based in Charlottesville, Virginia, and we focus specifically on the Virginia market. One unique thing about Sun Tribe is we're a turnkey provider, so not only are we providing the financing, we have full engineering in-house and construction teams that are gonna see the project through the whole life cycle of the delivery. Big thing for us is safety. We work with school districts all over the state, working, you know, around campuses and schools is our utmost importance to kinda make sure that the schools' intentions are being upheld while we're delivering these projects. So, we really put a lot of emphasis on that. So, what is a PPA?
Excuse me, Taylor, can we get the presentation move forward?
Oh, sorry, I'm so sorry about that. So, let me pause on this slide for a second. So, largest provider in the state, we're really proud of that, and most of that is due to our vertical integration nature, kinda hit on the financing, the engineering and the construction. Engineering, you know, most of us came from larger utility scale power generation. We came to Virginia specifically to kinda grow this market within the school systems. And then, safety, you know, that's a big one for us, and I kinda hit on that before, but really wanna iterate on that. So, what is a solar power purchase agreement? So, right now, there's a pilot program in place with Dominion Energy that has a cap of fifty megawatts, so these programs would be slotted within that program. And it enables third-party financing for a group such as Sun Tribe to actually own and operate the system with no upfront capital cost to the school district. We would actually sell you the power, the electricity, in this case, we're giving you about a seven percent discount to what you're currently paying Dominion, and I'll get into it a little bit further, but we're also going to include a new roof at the Palatine Elementary School as part of the package. So, not only are you saving money kinda day one with no capital outlay, you're getting a new roof out of the deal, which we're really excited about. Maintenance is fully borne by Sun Tribe. You know, our revenues come from actually the systems generating the electricity, and then we just invoicing you on a monthly basis. So, you'll get a small bill from Dominion as you always would, and then you'll get an invoice from Sun Tribe for the remainder of that electricity. So, in this case, we'll be doing roof mounts. All will be ballasted and standing seam, so in either configuration, there's no roof penetrations. I'll talk about roof warranties in a minute, but, you know, these are really thirty-five-year assets, so our number-one concern is to ensure that the integrity of the roof is maintained before, during, and after we deploy these systems. So, the roof warranties, one of the most important considerations that needs to be taken when deploying products on, you know, a pre-existing roof is doing a thorough check of the existing OEM membrane. So, we'll actually come out with whoever put that roof down, whether it's Firestone, Carlisle, we'll do an inspection. If there's any repairs that are gonna be required, we'll make sure that those are completed prior to installing the solar. We wanna make sure that we're working with a good membrane. The racking configuration will actually be pre-approved by the membrane manufacturer, so we'll work with them. We've worked with all the major membrane manufacturers, so we actually know who those contacts are. We'll make sure that the racking solution is pre-approved by them. And then, once the system is installed, we'll have that OEM rep come back out, do an inspection, and make sure that that system was installed to their guidelines, to their tech spec. And that at that point, they will sign a new recertification of your existing roof warranty, right? Ultimately, that document is utmost importance for Palatine because that's, you know, what is going to be contractual if there's an issue in the future. So, we're really, we put a lot of effort in to making sure that this process is followed with all of our construction managers. One really cool aspect that we've seen with these systems is kinda the educational side. So, we'll actually partner with a group called the Need Project, they're a nonprofit out of DC, and we will actually, Sun Tribe will just cut Palatine County Schools a grant to fund the education of teachers so that these teachers can actually integrate, you know, this new technology, this energy source into their curriculum. They're actually based on Virginia SOL's Common Core. We've seen great success with other counties that have done this, and it's just really cool to really see the students get engaged on like a real project that's on their roof, or it's out in the field, in this case, it'd be on the roof. I've actually taught several classes after installing a system, and the engagement that we get, the questions and answers that come out of it is really rewarding. So, just depending on the size of the system, we'll work with you to get the grant as necessary to get all the teachers that you would like to get educated on this, Sun Tribe will cover a hundred percent of that cost. So, this is very small because it is a thirty-five-year deal. What I'd like to draw your attention to is kinda the year one. So, to start off, you're currently paying your utility nine-point three cents per kilowatt hour, and we're gonna be selling you that same electricity at eight-point five-seven cents per kilowatt hour. Big note is, we're gonna re-roof the flat membrane part of the Palatine Elementary School. We will be putting some panels on the standing seam, but at this point, only the membrane needs to be replaced. So, you know, we're locking you in at a pretty significant discount right off the bat.
Taylor, could I interrupt you right there?
Yes, sir.
If I could, just for the board and the public, so that portion of the roof at Palatine Elementary is probably our number-one item on our CIP to be replaced after we take out the items that we're already doing with train. And when Sun Tribe came and presented to us, and we didn't see any solar arrays on that portion, we asked them to go back and figure in the costs of replacing that roof. Could we figure this into this so that we could accomplish something in our CIP without having to go to the county and asking for extra money? So, I think that bears pointing out to you and as well to the public because that's a big ticket item that we're now gonna be able to hopefully do through this process instead of obligating county funds to accomplish that CIP item.
Yeah, I appreciate you kinda hitting on that. You know, those are, you know, well over two-hundred thousand dollars in funds that can be reallocated, you know, to more important items for the school. We know that every dollar counts, right? And so, not only from the savings standpoint, but also kinda reallocating those capital funds can be tremendously valuable. One other note is that there are other membrane roofs that we would be looking to deploy solar on, and we've already included in our price to remove our solar arrays when those new roofs need to be deployed. So, that's, they range from, you know, year ten to year fifteen, when some of these other schools are gonna need new roofs. So, we wanna make sure that you're not sitting there stuck with a solar array on your roof, you gotta put a new membrane down, and there's some extra costs associated with that. That's a cost that Sun Tribe has already baked in to this proposal, so wanna make sure that is outlined. Other than that, before I kinda move off of this slide, are there any questions? I'm gonna get into the sites specifically after this slide, but I just wanna kinda open it up to any questions at this point that might be present.
Questions for our presenter, Mrs. Emel.
So, when you said that there might be repairs needed before you start, so who will be tasked, or who will pay for that?
Yeah, good question. So, to date, we've never had any major repairs required before deploying, but if there were a repair, that's typically a cost borne by the school. If there is a cost, and it's significant, we can actually include that in the PPA. The reality is, you know, if it's under five thousand dollars, which generally it is to get someone out to do a repair here and there, Sun Tribe's just gonna bear that cost. We have a good relationship with most of these roofers. So, you know, we haven't actually run into that to date, so we don't have any precedent that there would be any major costs associated with that.
Okay, and did you say you're going to replace the entire Palatine Elementary roof, or just the areas that you're using?
Good question. So, I'm gonna flip to this slide here. So, you'll notice that the, if you're familiar with the roof, the flat membrane section is sort of in the middle, and all the surrounding areas are all standing seam, so we're only gonna be replacing the flat membrane sections.
So, it's that blue, I'm sorry, that blue section to the far west of the building, that square right there is the flat section of the roof, the rest of it is metal standing seam roof that is in good shape, but that's the section of the roof that we were most concerned about because it's thirty years old.
Yeah, it's end of life.
And really, it's something that we needed to have replaced anyway.
Where the gym is, is that it? The big piece?
Cafeteria and gym, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so there's actually a section of roof where we don't currently show any solar panels that will also be replaced. It's the little flat membrane section over to the southwest.
I don't see what, do you see what?
Is it this area?
Is that what we're talking about?
The flat area is a blue, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, just this part is what you're gonna?
That's where the solar arrays are going, it extends a little bit further out to down to the south of that.
If you look at the screen right here, the flat membrane section is, I'm just gonna encompass it with the, that, that's the flat membrane section.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
That's not the same thing we're looking at.
Mm-mm.
And then, there's another section right here, which we're not currently showing solar, but we're gonna go ahead and replace that one as well.
Okay, so that's not the cafeteria or the, but that's still, that's the area that needs to be replaced?
Correct.
Okay, okay. All right, and I guess another question, I'll wait for that, go ahead. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cole?
I'm looking at your chart on the previous page, which is very small, and we can see it because we were able to look at it a whole lot more from a closer distance, but the first year's cumulative savings of two-hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, that's for the new roof, I'm assuming that's built into that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And tell me how the annual savings increased year by year, what's driving that?
Great question. So, one of the big drivers for the value of these projects is that we've done a lot of analysis on historical utility rates, and in Virginia, the trailing historical rate rise is about three-point zero-eight percent per year, and in this case, this PPA rate would be locked in at one percent. So, if you see your host utility rate, that's gonna increase at the historical rate of about three percent, and we're locked in at one percent. So, that delta over time, you're gonna see more and more savings.
So, the PPA rate on that second column is your rate, and you're telling me that's going up annually one percent per year, and you're assuming the Dominion rate will go up about three percent based on history?
That's correct.
So, that drives the higher savings on the other side. So, based on this thirty-five-year timeline that you have here, we're looking at three million, three-hundred thousand dollars thereabouts of savings, and so you get your money back through payments to you, through, so there's no capital money that goes back to you. That money, capital improvements that you do are, they're within the rates, you get that money back within the rates we pay you for electricity?
Right, right. These projects can most similarly be related to commercial real estate, you know, we're actually securing long-term fixed-rate debt. In this case, it'd be twenty-five-year fixed-rate debt. So, we're able to, financing is the name of the game, we're able to push that financing cost out over twenty-five years, which is what enables us to kinda drive that PPA rate down as low as we can. And in this case, you know, you're getting some CapEx kinda right out of the gate. One thing to note is that the high school is not included on this first phase, if you will. So, that three-point-three million in savings is only for the four schools, with significant potential savings coming from that school as well.
And why are we not doing the high school?
Because of the age of the roof. Sun Tribe wanted us to replace the roof on the high school before they added solar arrays because of the age of that roof, and we don't have that money. We don't even have that as a CIP project at this point, so we just said it, you know, we can move forward with the other four schools, but until we added that to the CIP and saw that as a need, then we wouldn't be looking at PHS as part of this project.
And just to kinda hit on the contractual configuration, there'll be a master PPA, and then you nest system agreements for each site underneath of that. So, in the future, you know, a year or two down the road, if you wanted to look at the high school, it's easily nestable with kinda within that construct. So, from a financing angle, it's really, I mean, you'll have already seen the savings on these four schools, so you would be able to make a very educated decision like, yeah, this is great, no, this is not great. We're already seeing repeat customers from other school districts, happy to connect you with anyone there. I think Dr. Jones has spoken with several. But, you know, we're in the business of partnerships, right? We're gonna own and operate this system on your building for, you know, over the course of decades, so repeat business is really important for us.
And on your slide with the picture, Palatine Elementary, you've got annual production of five-hundred forty-three thousand, six-hundred eighty-nine kilowatts, and that equals an offset of seventy-six percent. So, you're telling me that seventy-six percent of the air electricity costs will be covered by solar, is that, am I reading that correctly?
That is correct. One note is that we have factored in the performance contract savings into these offset numbers. So, just so that you know, you know, we did a holistic evaluation, there's not gonna be a case where we're producing more than, you know, than your building would actually end up using once those efficiencies kick in. So, this is a holistic view.
Okay. And is that about the figure you aim for when you're designing it?
I mean, we like to go for a hundred percent, you know, because there's, for every kilowatt hour we produce, you know, we're saving the school district money. So, a hundred percent is what we target. In this case, you know, we were just constrained from a roof standpoint. And, you know, so a hundred percent is what we love to hit.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't mean to call for questions there.
No, you're doing fine, you're doing fine, Mr. Cole. All right, I have a couple, Mrs. Emel, unless you have anything you'd like to ask at this point?
Well, I just wanna make sure-
It's a small group up here this evening, so before I get started, if you wanna go ahead.
Well, even though we're not doing the high school, if we could still include the teacher, Mr. Gibbs, and the students?
Oh, absolutely, and Mr. Gibbs actually sat in on the presentations, he was part of the selection committee, so he has participated in the process, and certainly, the educational aspects of this, the high school students would still be able to participate in.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I do wanna hit on there that relates to kinda the educational piece is there will be a public dashboard that'll show the real-time production of the system, which is really cool, but you can also extract historical data, you can pull it down in a number of file formats, Excel being the easiest to, you know, compare to weather patterns, you know, doing graphs, looking at how in the winter versus in the summer, you know, those correlations exist, which is, can open up quite a range of science projects.
All right, I've got a couple of questions for you, sir. So, and these are in no particular order, but a few moments ago, you said that your production, did I understand, you say you anticipate producing seventy-six, or meeting seventy-six percent of our power needs at those buildings off of the solar arrays that you're gonna have in place?
So, let me, maybe I just walk through the rest of these sites. So, seventy-six percent for Palatine Elementary, sixty-nine percent at Pocahontas,
Okay.
fifty percent at Flat Rock,
Okay.
and seventy-two percent at Palatine Middle.
All right, so is that an average on an annual basis, or where's that number coming from?
Yep, that's over a twelve-month period, you know, if, that's, we're looking to offset on a twelve-month period that much. So, in this case, Palatine Middle, we're gonna be offsetting seventy-two percent of your total kilowatt-hour usage over the course of twelve months.
Okay, and this is certainly a question for you, but it could be for Dr. Jones as well. What other school districts in this area have a relationship like this with this company?
You wanna take that, Taylor, and then I'll follow up with who I've spoken to?
Totally. So, it grows every day, but Arlington County, Middlesex County, Westmoreland County, Fluvana County, Henrico County, we have several in LOI stage, being Louisa County,
What's LOI?
Hanover County.
What's LOI stage?
Oh, sorry, letter of intent, which is, we, you know, we're just kinda negotiating the final aspects of the contract.
And I've spoken to the superintendents in Middlesex, and I believe they are the first county in Virginia to offset a hundred percent of their power.
Yep.
So, they jumped in with both feet and-
They did.
Have done a good job there. They've been very satisfied. Theirs has been up and running for-
About a year?
Yeah.
Now?
And then I spoke to the superintendent in Fluvana as well, they're very excited. Their project's just, I think, in an installation phase right now.
Yeah, engineering phase right now.
But they're really excited about it, and they're putting it on their schools. So, I talked to those two superintendents a couple different times, most recently at our last conference, just to see how the project's growing and their happiness with it, and they both were very, very excited about it, especially Middlesex, because of kinda the reaching that threshold is pretty exciting to do from a community standpoint as well.
Yeah, and just to kinda hit on, you know, the financial drivers here, the technology has really come leaps and bounds in just the last, like, eighteen months, to be honest. I mean, two years ago, the numbers that we're hitting today would not have been attainable then because the solar panel costs and the inverter costs were just a lot higher. So, you know, up until, you know, a year and a half ago, it was a price-premium product, and it really, it really just kept folks from doing it. I mean, the numbers got a pencil for it to make sense. I mean, you're seeing, you know, all the utility players, Dominion, we're actually building several large projects for Dominion ourselves, and we're able to kinda take that, you know, utility-scale power generation and bring it straight to your roof. And that's why the pricing is attractive as it is, it's, the technology has come a long way.
Do you anticipate the technology will continue to develop as it has in the past, you know, twenty years?
Yeah, so, I don't have it on this particular slide, but if you kinda look at the trajectory of solar, it's declined precipitously, you know, over the last ten years, and we're kinda seeing it flatten out. You know, it's kind of exponential, and now, every cent helps. You know, it's kind of exponential, and now, every cent helps, right? But, we're not going to see the leaps and bounds over the next three years like we did over the last three. We're kind of hitting this inflection point where most of the production is becoming automated. So, like, we had this ramp up in companies building machines to build solar panels, and like, those are now mainstream, and that's what really drove the cost down. We're seeing a lot more manufacturing ramp up in the United States because of that automation, which we're really excited about. But, because these are such a long-term, you know, low-risk power generating assets, you know, we don't intend to, to come out and swap the panels in the future, right? It's, we're locking in, we're locking in that financing and just creating those savings for, for the life of the project.
So, yeah, so, so talk a little bit, if you would please, about that. So, are the panels yours and, and, or are they ours? And at what point do they transfer if they remain yours? What's the maintenance look like? So, if something happens to that array because of, you know, a natural event, that's, something happens and we have several that are broken, damaged, whatever, how's the maintenance on that work? You know, who supports it on a long-term basis?
Right.
Why don't you address those right at this point?
Good question. So, there is a 30 percent federal tax credit that's currently in place through the end of 2019. So, we're kind of at this nexus point of, you know, a tax credit that was put in place to jumpstart an industry. It did, and we're kind of feeling the, the value of that as it ramps down. You know, it's going to step down over the next four years, it's going to stair-step down year over year. So, we're kind of right at the end of like, still the full tax credit value, but the technology is there. So, we will own, own all of the equipment. We'll be harvesting that tax credit, which is how we're kind of getting to that low PPA rate. So, because we own the system, we fully insure it. We'll add Powhatan County schools as an additional insured on our umbrella. Because we own and operate, you know, assets all over the state, we have a very robust insurance policy, which all of these projects nest underneath. So, we'll fully insure it, you know, if there was like a hail event, let's say, right? That were to damage any panels, we have a full asset management team that, that all they do is, is monitor our existing operating facilities. If there's any issues, they're going to get an email alert pretty much instantly, and we'll dispatch a team out as quick as possible to, you know, assess the damage and replace panels as necessary. From, from a hail, right? Hail is, is one of the more common issues that would arise. These panels can handle one-inch hail at 70 miles an hour. That's just kind of an industry standard spec, so it's actually tempered glass, incredibly durable. I mean, we've deployed upwards of 8,000 panels, and we've, we've had one that was dead on arrival. So, the reliability is, is pretty tremendous from, from these, these panels now. So, you know, from a maintenance question, we, we love this particular, you know, PV, photovoltaic, because there's no moving parts, right? There's, the only moving part, some inverters have a computer fan that kick on when, when they get hot. Some are actually moving away from that to just natural convection. So, very steady state. You know, it's the panels, it's wires to an inverter, and then it's an inverter connected straight into your, your electrical system. So, from a maintenance standpoint, we'll come out and do an annual inspection once a year, just to make sure that, you know, something, even the, the system is producing as it should, we'll come out and do a visual just to make sure that something hasn't, you know, happened. But typically, that doesn't turn up any issues, but we like to come out and do, do a check once a year on it.
Dr. Jones?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Could I, if I would mind if I could ask you, please come to the podium and just share with us your name, sir?
Sure. Rob Karodi, also with Sun Tribe.
Good evening.
Just one, one thing that might help as you're thinking about maintenance and as you're thinking about ways that we preserve the system. You know, we sort of live by that John Wooden axiom, if you don't have time to do it right, how are you going to have time to do it over? So, most of our company are engineers and construction managers and construction folks. And keeping that all in-house means that when we install and design the system, it's installed properly to begin with, which helps eliminate a lot of the potential maintenance issues down the road. If you've designed a system poorly, things malfunction. We keep all of that in-house so that you know that you're partnering with us, and you know who's doing all of the work there, so that ultimately, you don't see problems down the road because it's been handled sort of upstream. Something to think about as you're, have that sort of maintenance hat on, which can be helpful. That was all for me.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Karodi.
If I could add, Mr. Chairman, that aspect of Sun Tribe is, is one why the committee felt like they were the best, besides the product and their experience in the field, having all of these services, the financing, the maintenance and installation, the engineering all in one place in one company was a, a big reason why Sun Tribe was selected. The other vendor that we had, it was three different companies coming to the table, one doing the financing, one doing the maintenance and installation, one doing the engineering and, and production, and we could foresee an instance where people would start pointing at each other. It's not our problem, it's their problem.
Right.
So, that's why, one of the main reasons why Sun Tribe was the successful vendor that came out of this process, because everything is under one roof in terms of who we would contact, and they own it, they maintain it at the end of the 25-year lease.
Yep, and that was one thing that, that Mr. Chairman had asked. We do give you the purchase option, if you'd like. We can set that point. Typically, it's at year 26. We give you, you know, full voluntary option to purchase the system. If you don't want to, we'll continue to, to own and operate it, but that's just kind of another perk that, that you can leverage in the future, if you'd like.
All right. Other, so, and I understand we are having a discussion this evening about a potential path forward.
Correct.
So, in, in the discussions and in your work at this point, are there any sort of hidden costs to us in terms of, as a school system, preparing to have this take place?
No, we really, Mr. Johns and-
And I'm not suggesting you're hiding it from us.
No, 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 no. Yeah, no, it's a good question.
Not within the scope of this present.
No, we've, we've had several conversations. I know Dr. Tibbs has had several conversations with Sun Tribe. We've even gone down the what-if alley of, say there's, you know, a problem with a roof, roof leak at Powhatan Middle that's underneath one of the solar arrays. Well, what do we do? Well, we may have to move some of them, some of those panels. Well, Sun Tribe is committed to at least once a year, or once a year, coming and removing whatever panels they need to for free. So, you know, we don't have that happen a lot where we would have to do major roofwork, but we even looked at something like that. Could that be a potential cost? Because we don't have the manpower, the expertise to, to do that, but Sun Tribe has agreed to write that into the PPA agreement. So, there are no costs for us. There are savings for us. There are some very strong educational opportunities for us. There's an opportunity for us to get a CIP project done through financing through this that we found very appealing. So, I only see upside. You know, there's risk in anything that you do, but certainly, and I think that's why this has become so popular with school districts across the, the state.
Okay. All right.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you're talking about, what if there was like a disaster, like a hurricane or a tornado, where, you know, some of them actually flew off and yada, yada? So, does that affect the day-to-day operation until they're fixed?
Good question. So, so the solar will operate in Western as parallel to the grid, so, and, and Dr. Tibbs hit on this, there, there is a, a process in place currently in Virginia called retail net metering, which is, which is another huge reason why we're able to do this. So, let, let's say, for example, in the middle of the summer, where you might not be having a lot of load inside the building, and the solar is producing a lot. You're going to be producing way more electricity than the building is consuming at that particular moment. That extra electricity is actually going to flow back to the grid, and you're going to get a credit on your bill for that amount of power. So, you know, that's, that's how we can size these things so that the, the generation doesn't have to match the usage. So, you'll never actually know whether, you know, right now, we could have solar on this building, and you wouldn't know whether you're getting half of it from solar and half from Dominion. It, it's seamlessly flowing back and forth between the two power sources. And that, that's all, you know, we can thank the inverters, they're all, we refer to as smart inverters now, and they'll just sync right to the voltage and the frequency of the grid, and when the sun shines, they push amperage, and when, you know, a big cloud comes over, their amperage will, will draw down. So, you'll never actually see any interruption. If there was an issue with the solar, you'll never notice. We'll come out, right? We'll troubleshoot it, but there will be no operational impacts to any of the schools when, when these systems are, are running. To speak to like a, a massive event where the system were ripped off the roof, you know, God forbid, that would be covered under our property insurance. And if they're, you know, unfortunately, if there were damage to, you know, a car, that would also be covered under liability. So, we would actually umbrella any issue that, that would occur at a site.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions at this point? All right, sir, you want to continue?
So, so that, that's, this is it. I want to show you the, the four sites, and we, we can look at, at, at any of them that you'd like to. But, but overall, that's it. I did want to hit on, we, we've had an intern working, working for us for, for many months, Amelia Thomas, who was actually a student here at Powhatan, and she, she grew up here. She was actually, you know, part of the development process. She, she kind of helped look at some of the schools, looked at some of the energy bills. So, it's really cool. She was super excited to, to hear that, you know, Powhatan wanted to get solar, and that, you know, we were able to kind of make that a reality. So, she wasn't able to make it today, but she just graduated from UVA, econ major, moving out to Denver. But she was really excited about the, about the project.
Do we remember her?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good.
I talked to her fairly often, but she, you can't keep her in Virginia, she's going to California or something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We tried.
Yeah. We, we had a, we, we had an offer for her, but she, she wanted to travel, so we're, we're excited for her.
All right, so other questions or comments?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, as someone who is very concerned with their energy use and the way we generate energy and the, and the negative effects of often, that often occur of generating energy, I'm, I'm very excited by this. You know, I would like to be like Middlesex and eventually be 100, have 100 percent of our energy, capable to produce 100 percent by solar power. So, I'm looking forward to, to the next step in this process, and I, and I appreciate the hard work that Mr. Tibbs and Dr. Jones and Mr. Johns and the other folks have done in researching this. You know, I'd heard a little bit about Fluvana's process a few years, I guess about a year and a half or so ago, and so I'm, I'm really excited that we're doing it.
Okay. Ms. Zimmel, any last comments or questions for the presenter?
I'm good, thank you.
I, I just have one, and I, and I think I see the answer to this, but I want to make sure while you're there at the podium, is there any circumstance in which this would cost us more on an annual basis than what we paid today?
The, no. I mean, the, the rates, effectively, the, your current utility rates would have to plummet over the next couple of years for the PPA rate to be above, you know, what your current, or sorry, what, what the host utility is charging, which, considering how low natural gas pricing is right now, most coal units are retiring, nuclear will, you know, effectively kind of stay where it is. Really, the only, the only way for, for pricing to go is up. You know, if gas prices were really high, I think that would be a different story, but gas prices are very low right now. So, I think it's a great hedge against, against future energy costs.
Certainly appears to be a way for us to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollar here in Powhatan County, so. So, at this point, Dr. Jones, Mr. Tibbs, Dr. Tibbs rather, what we need to do is decide, do we wish to move forward with further discussions? Is that correct?
Yeah, at this point, we are, we're ready to move forward. We just wanted to bring this to the board since it's been a while since you've heard about this, give you an update on where we are. And we will, if the board has some consensus for us to continue working on the final PPA agreement, we'll keep working on that, and then look to bring it to you in June for approval.
Well, we don't have another board meeting before the, you're speaking at the meeting in the beginning of June, is that right?
Yes, yes.
All right, so we have three of the five members here this evening.
Correct.
All right, so you have, we have a quorum, but certainly, we're missing two of our members this evening. Any concerns with moving the issue forward based on what we've heard this evening?
I'm concerned they're not here, but I think between Dr. Jones and Dr. Tibbs, they can get the information they need. I'm sure that Dr. Tibbs would-
There's one on right now.
Would be willing to sit down with any, any of us individually if we have questions. You know, I do think that it's important that we do let the county supervisors know that we, that we are looking at this, so if you can communicate that to us.
And I have done that. I've sent that to Mr. Voorhees, so that he's aware that we're doing the presentation tonight, and I sent that presentation to him. I believe they've also investigated this option as well, so.
Yeah, I know, there was some mention of it at one of our meetings, but-
And I know their structures are not quite like ours, but do you know the status of their discussion?
I don't at this point, but I can find out and let you know.
Okay. Well, I think, Mr. Coles, I think your, your advice is well-taken, that certainly, if the other two members have concerns, they have an opportunity to speak directly with Dr. Jones and gather some more information before the June meeting. And at that meeting, what we're going to simply do is then look again at the information you're going to bring forward for us. Is that correct?
At that point, we would hope to be able to move forward with approving, right? Correct.
All right. Ms. Zimmel, any concerns?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Appreciate it, board. Dr. Jones?
Thank you.
Have a good evening, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Conca, sir.
You need a second, or you want us to go ahead and move forward?
All right, go ahead, Dr. Jones. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, Mr. Conca. And our next presentation is on a school climate and working condition survey. Dr. Omahundro has compiled some results and a summary of those results for the board, and we'll give you some background on this survey and where it came from and how we administered it. Dr. Omahundro?
I'm just glad I don't have to say photovoltaic at all in my presentation today.
Yeah, no doubt.
So, as Dr. Jones said, we did a-
Dr. Omahundro, could I stop you just one, one second? If you would just make sure, please, the minutes reflected, we've been joined by Mr. Conca just prior to the presentation on the climate survey. Thank you very much. Dr. Omahundro, and I had to pronounce your last name, and I apologize for mispronouncing it. Dr. Omahundro, please proceed.
Great, thank you. So, as Dr. Jones said, we did a school climate and working condition survey, and we have done surveys in the past, but I wanted to talk a little bit about how this was different than previous surveys. So, the purpose of this year's survey was twofold. As you know, we adopted a strategic plan last fall, and one of the goals of the strategic plan was to identify ways to create key performance indicators that would determine whether or not we were meeting our key performance objectives of that strategic plan. And so, one of the key performance indicators that we had identified was to do surveys of staff and students. So, this survey that I'm going to discuss today met that objective. Also, the Commonwealth of Virginia has done surveys of students in the past, but they wanted to do a working condition survey that addressed what was going on with teachers and staff members in individual schools and across divisions. And so, this survey also met that objective. We implemented this, we first saw it actually last fall. The state gave us the questions in advance, asked for some information for review of the questions, and then they put it out for administration. We had any time during the spring term to do that, and we determined that it would be best to do it in January and February, so we administered it at each of our schools. It was voluntary, it was anonymous, and our participation rates varied because it was voluntary and anonymous, and you can see those participation rates. It was administered at grades four and five at the elementary level, six through eight at the middle school. It was only required of eighth, eighth graders. We asked our sixth and seventh graders to take it as well, and then for the ninth through and seventh graders to take it as well, and then for the ninth through 12th graders. So participation rates ranged from 57 to 100% for students, staff 90 to 100%, and teachers 67 to 100%. And staff was generally administration, instructional assistants, that would be who staff was comprised of for that survey. I have a lot of information here about how the analysis worked at each level, and I'll give you the opportunity to look at this on your own. But I do want to say that each of the schools, we talked about how they might want to analyze their results, and then they made a plan that was specific to their school building, but there were some common elements. So each of the schools reviewed it by their administrative team. They also looked at it as a leadership team, which could include more than just a principal and assistant principal. They shared it out at one or multiple staff meetings, as well as provided the full surveys to their staff members. They all had, each of their principals compiled some information and shared that with some of the leadership at the division level. And then they are now using that information to determine next steps for planning for improvement in the areas that they found there were areas for opportunities. At the secondary level, a similar process was used. It's a bigger staff, so some of those steps took a little bit longer or took a little bit different shape than they did at the elementary level. Dr. Martin at the middle school had identified a protocol to use that many of the schools used as part of that, and it's linked within this presentation if anyone wants to review it. The high school incorporated some different committees. They used the VTSS committee, the PBIS committee, as a way to analyze the results of both surveys. I do want to point out that this creates baseline data for us that we will be able to use for comparison in future years to see how we're meeting our goals of the strategic plan. And when we took all of these surveys in totality, there were some common themes that came up at, across all five schools. Certainly, each school has individual things that they need to work on or want to work on, but some of the common themes were, across the board, staff and students said that our schools are positive environments, and they felt that their environments were safe. They also noted across all three levels that teachers have high expectations within the division, and that we have a strong physical plant, provide accurate, appropriate materials and technology for instruction. Some concerns that were raised across the board were bullying. There were perceptions, high perceptions of bullying that were not in alignment with the incidents and the experiences that were reported for bullying. So those perceptions were high, whereas the incidents and the experiences were reported as low. The teachers rated their instructional practices higher than the students did in many cases, and the teachers asked for more professional development. So those were some of the common themes that came out of the survey. What we will do with this information, as I mentioned, it was a baseline that we have now created, that we will administer this survey year over year, so we can see how some of these things change based on the plans that we make. We will use the results at each school for summer planning in, in a variety of ways. We're going to implement strategies that are identified in that planning at each of the schools. We also have just this week received state results, so we now can do a comparison with our results as a division to other schools within the state and take a look at those.
And, and region. So we'll have region, regional results for region one and state results that we've just gotten in the last day or so. So we'll start reviewing those and comparing those. First look is that we are above or at both the regional and the state level in terms of percentage of people satisfied on all of these different metrics. So I didn't see anything that jumped out at me as a concern at first glance. In fact, I thought it looked pretty good for how we look compared to our regional and state colleagues.
And then the other item that we would like to do is to identify a comparable parent survey. Well, that, that was not specifically mentioned in the strategic plan. I think that would fill out the remainder of the survey results, so that we can have an accurate picture of how we're providing services for all of our stakeholders.
Ms. Chairman, I think, one other thing that I think is the next step is, this is the first year that the state has done this particular survey, both for teachers and students, and we have given feedback to the state on the survey. As with any survey, there are some questions that could be worded differently. The length of the survey could be a concern, so we've, each of the principals has shared some of that information with the state from their particular surveys, and we've shared things division-wide. One example is the bullying question. It, it's asked two different ways to both students and teachers. First way is, is bullying a problem at my school? And we saw that was a higher percentage. But then later in the survey, they asked the students and the teachers, I have wit, have I wit, or I have witnessed bullying in my school. Those numbers were much lower. So sometimes it's the way you ask the question that can get you the results that you may or may not want. So we've sent that feedback to the state. It's allowed us to then look at the differences between those, the two ways those questions are asked. And there's some other questions that are in third person versus first person, and some of those things that we've given some feedback. So hopefully, we'll get a stronger survey next year out of that.
Questions or comments?
Okay.
Mrs. Emo?
Well, I'm glad we're addressing the bullying, because I noticed that throughout as well. When I talk to parents, they say they don't want to bring it up. They feel it's better they don't bring it up, and it's hard to encourage them to bring it up. And when I say that I think it's important, you know, call your principal, you know, talk to your principal, you know, your principal doesn't allow this, you know, and it's hard to convince them that repercussions aren't going to happen, I guess. So I guess there's that added piece too. The, and the one thing that stuck out too is the po, the policy directives are improving our education system. They didn't like that. And, you know, so like, is that us, or is that the state, or is that-
And that's, that's one of those questions we sent back to the state. Is that a fed, are they talking about federal mandates? Are they talking state? Are they talking the school board? Are they talking the administration? And I think that's a question that was poorly worded that can be interpreted lots of different ways.
Right, because I don't want to be a problem for the teachers and staff of our schools if it, if it applies to us. So that concerned me. And I, then I noticed that Flat Rock student behavior was a, seemed to be a problem, or perceived to be a problem. And that's all I have.
And we, and we shared at the elementary level, so the results, or at least the summary of the results, were shared among all three schools. So they could see if there was some anomaly between their school and another school. They were able to see those results and then pick the brain of the other principal, or see if there's something different that's going on. So that, and same at the secondary level. So that was, that, it's valuable data for us to have. Like Dr. Omahundro said, it's the first time we've done it on a wide-scale basis. We've surveyed students in the past, but it certainly gives us some room to address some concerns. Board members have all of the surveys and executive content. We did not put that in public because there's some identifiable information on there for students and staff, so. But you have all the surveys there. If you would like to review them, if you haven't had a chance to, and if you have any other questions or concerns, feel free to let me know.
All right, other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's a, it's a good source of data. It's one source of data that, that we'll look at in, in those key performance indicators. There were some things, as I read through individual schools, and I might have had a chance to read through every school, but the schools that I did, did read through, there are some things that are concerning, but not surprising. You know, and, you know, I too am concerned about the length of the survey. If we ask kids to do a hundred-question survey every year, what, you know, what's the reliability going to be? And how many, how many students are going to participate year after year with a hundred questions?
And the feedback that we've given the state, just, not just us, but divisions across state, is to do this biannually. So every two years to give, because we need time to address what the concerns are and, and try to make a difference in them. And doing it every year, we think is overkill and could lead to some survey fatigue. So hopefully, we'll see this every other year.
That's a good idea.
My last comment is, I assume at some point, this information, some of the results of this is going to be shared with the students, so they'll know that, A, that we've gotten the data and that we're reacting with that data. Because I think it's important that they believe that they've been heard. So.
Good point. We'll work on that.
Yes, and I, I would say that that was a, a strong concern from the faculty at each school, that they wanted to see the specific information. They wanted that transparency, and that was meaningful for them to be able to see the true results, not a summary of results that was created by administration. They could see the actual results, and each of the faculties were provided copies of the, the survey.
Good.
All right, other questions or comments? Yes, I would just make a comment. I'm, I'm troubled by the theme about the bullying, and the perception of that is, is particularly troubling. If that is how it is perceived, I'm glad to see that the data doesn't support that, and I would certainly be disappointed if it did. But I think if that's the perception, and I'm sure you're thinking about ways you can try to educate us and the students and the faculty a little bit, because the only way to address the perception is really with facts. So, and, and I would, I would be interested to know sort of what ideas you bring forward about how you can do that. Because it certainly seems to be a topic, just as Ms. Emo has, has mentioned, that, you know, we hear about, the perception that this is a problem in, in, in some of our schools or in our schools in whole. So anything we can do to make that better, I certainly would like to discuss and, and see done.
Sure, we'll be happy to bring you back some more information. And, you know, it's something that we've talked about for a while, and certainly the role of social media doesn't make it any easier on us. I know I've had two meetings or two conversations with Dr. Martin with middle school parents in the last two days, all, all information that was portrayed on social media outside of school. But, you know, it concerns the parents when they run across this and they see this, and they come to the school asking for help, and certainly we provide that help and support for them. But the amount that we're seeing happening in the school by the infractions is very low. But I do think Ms. Emo was right. I think sometimes people are hesitant, especially students, but also some parents to report it to us. So we keep encouraging them to do so. There's ways to do it anonymously. There's ways to do it face-to-face, and we will keep encouraging parents to do that, and students.
Because we can't, or our administration can't do anything about it unless they know about it. That's what I say to them all the time.
Absolutely. I mean, there are many times where, you know, a parent will call me, and I'm sure the principals hear this a lot more than I do, my son's been bullied all year. Well, this is the first time we're hearing about it.
And it's May, yeah.
Yeah, and it's May. So, you know, we need to hear about it early, and we need to be able to address it early before it becomes an ongoing, because that's the definition of bullying, an ongoing series of incidents of, it's not just one incident. So, you know, we need to be able to address it as soon as we can. So we would just encourage them to continue coming forward.
Yeah, the communication is critical.
Yep.
Other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Omahundro.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Jones?
Sure. A few other items in the superintendent's report. First one is the next batch of policies. This is to receive information, and there's a summary of them that you have. I think it's like 12 policies, summary as well as the full policies. And I think you have a hard copy of that in your, on your, beside your computer, if you'd like to look over that. And any questions that you have as you're reviewing those, feel free to contact me or contact Dr. Parker, who's point person for policy.
All right, discussion on this item. This is informational this evening. All right, thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thanks. The next item is information as well. This is the 1920 student fees. We have a summary of those fees as part of the boilerplate. We are trying to be consistent and meet program needs, but also keep fees reasonable. So you can see the fees that are there. Some of these fees increase or decrease because of national organizations that are requirement. Some of them are other opportunities that we just see to make some adjustments. And so we're happy to answer any of those questions that you may have. It looks like most of the changes for this year are at the middle school. And so this is information. If you have questions, let me or Dr. Omahundro know, and we'll be happy to address those, and we'll be bringing these back in June for approval, so that we can get this information to parents over the summer. And then the last information is the students' rights and responsibilities, what we used to call the student code of conduct. This is the new updated draft. We've updated attendance. We've updated disruptive behavior, made some other adjustments based on updates to the code and legislation that's been passed. Please review this, and we will, you'll have plenty of time to review this. We'll be bringing this back to you in August for final approval.
All right. Initial questions or comments about this item?
I, yes, I had some, page 15, is that where we're, I'm getting questions from constituents about clothing. So, and we also have elections coming up too. So where do I send that to a person, a constituent who is interested in finding out if that's acceptable or not? Is that on page 15?
For clothing?
For clothing?
I'm looking now.
Okay. You know, with, with elections, and then also the, wearing the Confederate flag.
Are you talking about with campaign material? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if you, like, if we're doing president next year, or, you know, this is who you're voting for, is that acceptable?
Sorry, I wanted to make sure I understood your question. All right.
As well as wearing the Confederate flag.
Page 14 and 15 have student code of conduct, or student dress code on it. So yes, that is where that information is. There may be some other clarifying information in some of the school's student handbook, but this is what's approved by the school board and what we follow. There's also policy, school board policy on political campaigning, our political activity in schools. We can pull that policy number, I don't know it off the top of my head, but we'll get it to you, that kind of covers what can and can't be done as part of a political activity by staff. I don't know if it addresses students.
I think it addresses staff.
Just staff. So I don't think there's anything specifically for students. So we'll check on that and get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions or comments? All right, so this is informational in nature, and we have until August to address this.
Yep.
All right. All right, next item on our agenda is closed session. Mrs. Emo, could I ask you to read the certification, please, and make the motion necessary to take us into closed session?
Okay. While I make a motion, we go into closed session, but I'm still waiting for it to come up here. Up, here we go. I recommend and make a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Code 2.2-3711A1 to discuss the employment, resignation, and leave of specific employees, pursuant to Code 2.2-3711A2 and A4 to discuss the expulsion and school placement of specific students. Code 2.2-3711A7 to consult with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation. And pursuant to Code 22.1-60.1 to discuss the evaluation of the division superintendent. Codes 2.2-3711A1, A2, A4, A7, and 22.1-60.1.
Ms. Emo's recommendation is in the form of a motion. Is there a second or a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please respond with a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries forward zero. We are in closed session.
You made a pretty good time. Is it worse than plane travel or better? Yeah, yeah, tired now. I guess train isn't an option pretty often. You gotta get to the site.
Yes.
I don't even think it's.
Yeah, and then.
Was there a?
Payment through the board is not counting.
Well, they also said once it's like, it can become like a part of the, I mean.
Our operating budget.
Well, they also said, once it's like, it can become like a part of the, I mean.
Our operating budget.
It's not like it's.
I want to get a little.
No, with Tracy.
That's correct.
I signed up as well.
Actually, you know what? You're right. In case there's a question.
So, this is our, this is the PPA rate per kilowatt hour. So, what he's saying is, is if we produce two million eighty-four thousand thirty-nine kilowatts per week per year, this is what we.
I'm sorry. Why is this rate changing? He says one percent.
This is the, this is.
He says one of seventy percent.
No, because this post utility rate is increasing about three percent every year.
All right, so PPA rate, just, so I have a question. For the rate increasing one percent
And this is the post utility rate? So, it's projected kilowatts. So, then you take this and multiply it by the PPA rate, that's where you get the
I can write myself one down.
If you want to go dinner, you can spend some time.
Oh, my goodness.
So, the.
All the classes you were going to take when I just went.
This is what we.
They killed the dogs, so it would be very.
Thank goodness for my sister.
What this time, this.
I guess that happens often.
Isn't that happen often?
Yeah, but I had a dog, abandoned, so nobody would.
I mean, like, why?
This is the total kilowatt reduced.
There you go.
Otherwise, we would be making that to.
So, they turn.
Two hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
I don't know.
That's long into medical.
You just said five different ways.
Well, I went till July.
You have a say three years.
If they do, after they extend it out, now, we'll come down there or, you know, or.
I did not be in the real life here, but I think, I can't remember why you're something.
But I can't remember now.
It was the same as our special conference.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna, you know, make it a little suspecting things that will, stuff like that. Well, if I did, you know, I would already.
Here's an instructional.
My audit, I actually have a communication here.
You were talking about. Walmart, for example.
They asked one to.
Bernie would have. After order, we go before the five months of the show. This didn't blow up so bad that they gave her, she ordered two shirts, they made it four, and they thought the meat part was. Walmart, they're, uh, one of the. And Walmart, they're, uh, one of the.
And about the.
I'm gonna let you.
I'm gonna let you.
I'm gonna let you.
Was graduated from RC City with the associate's, he was graduated from high school.
They all face the same direction.
We had a, must've had.
But they all face the same direction, so there weren't chairs on either side.
So, you can't, yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
We're just going to go out.
Actually, there's only one one.
Well, I'm gonna say two.
Turn the motor all right there.
Twenty pounds of.
You should do a Samson.
I said, that just means that, you know, you should do a Samson.
We're just in frozen.
They are interesting.
I did a year of those.
No, no, I know, I know. I'm not saying that.
Unfortunately, I don't.
It just went out three minutes ago on Twitter.
It's not just, Mark is about five years, so it's. It's a question.
Why does it get to the speed?
I don't know.
Why do you?
Yeah, sometimes that happens.
I still have my slower.
Are you kidding? Well, no, I get it, but why bother?
I figured, I got a couple of tickets and I tried.
Oh, is it?
So, Bernie, about why, it gets once a lot. Come try it out. Skis all over.
I think it's.
From your school, why?
Yeah, but they're not, I'm not.
There you go.
What time was it? What time was it?
No, 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 it's right team, it's right team.
What was this? Yes. What time was it? This is an after school event.
Next year, they'll actually.
I saw me, they squeal.
That's not my thing.
Well, I'm sorry.
So, PPA rate, just, so I have a question. For the rate increasing one percent every
And this is the post utility rate? So, it's projected kilowatts.
So, what he's saying is, is if we produce two million eighty-four thousand thirty-nine kilowatts per week per year, this is what we. Why is this rate changing?
This is one of the.
Is like one of the.
Should change under. So, that's why.
Because the state of that, Flatliners had, was a great place to meet people who, all parts of town, you know? Because it's a convenient to everybody, because everybody has.
Yeah, that's all.
So, I know there are a lot of people that.
Is that a apartment?
But it was the, it should be lost for my, I push it, I push it.
So I didn't know.
I push. Melissa's come to us.
It was the least place to live.
And then, you know, sixteen to ninety.
They were apartment.
But I'm pushing. Especially so, and that, you get mad, you get hit by a street official. You're gonna say your partner. At a place where you're talking, basically. And he's jerking all the. John go function. This would be real terrible. Uh, you're like, here. And now you can't see it.
All of a sudden.
You'll have ten or twelve of them sweating.
Didn't turn off the screen. Are you still dreaming?
We're gonna have to start. Like two factors. Definitely making those chairs. Yep, just pre-prompted. Your ten years apart. But your years apart.
Yeah, they're really great. I mean, they're powerful, incredible, or classic. Yeah, but why do you? What? Uh, I already hired her. Yeah, when you could be written down. I already hired her.
Yeah, that's pretty true. I had my motorcycle there earlier and, you know, I'm letting myself, you know, have that. Of course, the rent section, like services.
A lot, a lot.
They had either little jobs. She's hired her renters now. And you have them. Three hundred girls. Sure. And we all decided that. And we're sweet. Justin. She wasn't.
Sarawaki. Oh, I don't.
Well, listen, very, very. Congratulations. You walk along shore and pick up any kind of, you know, snails or something. Pull them and get them out of the water.
We do a workshop first.
Oh, workshop. Which is where the French were gonna. Okay. Whatever, we took over. We did. I remember that adventure with those things. Oh, yes, absolutely. Three thousand yards or so, long, ten thousand. And what a.
Long time. That's kind of exciting. Not one of my house. I know.
Four months ago, we need to take like a small pickup truck. Your stuff. Two dollars, you gotta run the water. Two guys. Make sure you have a lift.
Oh, yeah.
With four roads.
That's a no ring.
Two roads on them, break them off, fill up the bin, and then turn on the engine. They pull it up and fill up the other one. Forty five minutes, thirty minutes or so. We have four rounds working together.
Did you give me that stat?
I had a speaker. I had a speaker.
I have a back yard. Doing the front yard. Your front yard.
Well, they were, that was like.
No, I do it just like.
Just very.
Uh-huh, direct to the.
I think they're trying to put solar on. These sisters on the residence. This place.
I'm not talking about bigger.
Yeah. But I actually. It's the old trail, the former. Because they do not. Castle. Just going to fit the. Sorry now. Need more miles. You come up.
I mean, I'll be back there holding.
And this was.
It was all player.
And I had my car here. We had this, we had money. So you know, it's. That is. I haven't said a problem. People do that a lot.
Yeah.
I was still there.
I don't see that.
The, uh. Sometimes if they lose their better. So I would do that. I thought he was. I'm obviously, I just see this. And it's got the metal box. It's going on. So they call this. Was my. I don't know. Yeah, but we can't serve these. It's too heavy, so it's like. You know, I'm looking at it in terms like, well, this is a walker castle. Sure. Doesn't get a lot of love. We built it about, you know, forty, twenty days. I had it look back. And there was a second person actually this. They all sent. It was funny to say them. I don't think it's fair yet. And it goes on. So, so I'm looking for the, I was looking at the ground of this church. I was looking for these two rods or six, seven. It's, uh, kind of look up. They blow one of them, they sit. Turn around. Now we got the arms running up. I'd say. Imagine what time could have. They could never.
So, yeah. In time it's. Um.
You know, white. So just. I think orange would sell.
My contact. Sticking some like.
Yeah.
You know, like I have. You're gonna see. Where's your mom and dad? Okay, so what?
West end, west end.
Oh, no, that'd be great. Oh, my gosh, that's right here.
Awesome. Yeah. This is. And it's the same. Had her for that. Don't get the other. And you. Yeah. It's like. Now that they're. As you're ready. Yeah. Like these are like. Out there.
I had an insane. Yeah.
So it's like. So before we should ask. You know?
Yeah.
I have done this. Yeah.
Why? That's. I said. Well, they were many day moves. Yeah.
He's doing this. Yeah, look. Yeah. Thanks, Kelsey. Say what? I saw. Again, I saw a bunch of posts though about the. The amount of institutional. Right now.
It's crazy. One of the recent.
Yeah.
Okay, where's our technology fella? Could you get one of them please? Thank you. Okay, I've got a dead computer. So do you need mine or do you have one? I've got an extension. Yeah, I need to... Am I using that or am I using mine? Okay.
The what?
Thank you.
Okay.
Oops.
Okay, where's our technology fella?
Could you get one of them please? Thank you. Okay, I've got a dead computer. So do you need mine or do you have one? I've got an extension. Yeah, I need to... Am I using that or am I using mine? Okay.
The what?
Thank you.
Okay.
Oops. Yes. See if it comes up. Okay. 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 Okay.
Just by the burning flags back in the service.
Okay, where's our technology fella? Could you get one of them please? Thank you. Okay, I've got a dead computer. So do you need mine or do you have one? I've got an extension. Yeah, I need to... Am I using that or am I using mine? Okay.
The what?
Thank you.
Okay.
Oops. Yes. See if it comes up. Yeah. Okay. Can I just read it from here?
All right, so we need a motion to come back into open session. Come out of closed session. All right, good evening, folks. So procedurally, we're finishing our workshop at this point. So we're going to make a motion just a moment to come back, come out of closed session. We'll read our certification, conclude our workshop, and then we'll move into the more formal part of the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We re-enter open session?
Affirmative, recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the...
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So the next item on our agenda is adjournment of the workshop. Is there a motion to adjourn the workshop for the evening?
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor of adjournment of our workshop, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. We are adjourned from our workshop. If you'll give us just a moment, we'll transfer our computers over. We'll begin our regular seven o'clock meeting. All right, Madam Clerk, if you'll let the minutes reflect that all members of the school board are present this evening with the exception of Mrs. Ayers. We're joined by Dr. Jones. We'll begin our meeting with a pledge and invocation. I would ask Mr. Kunka if he would lead us in a pledge and Mr. Cole if he would lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this time of the year and for the many opportunities which we enjoy as citizens of the Commonwealth and of this nation. We ask that you bless and guide us and that we use those opportunities to further your will. Guide us tonight as we deliberate. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is approval of the draft agenda for the evening. Do any members have changes necessary for the agenda? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the draft agenda as presented?
I make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Next item is the approval of the minutes. Any discussion regarding the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the five and seven P.M. minutes of April the sixteenth.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Next item on the agenda is review of bill and receipts. Any discussion regarding the bill and receipts presented this evening before the school board's review? All right, the only question I have is the certification this evening shows a void of eight seventy-three sixty-nine. I would just ask if you could take a look at that for us and just verify what that is. Again, that's only on the certification document for me and it indicates a single void of eight seventy-three sixty-nine. So if you could just make sure the document's correctional, all right? All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, that takes us to our first public comment period of the workshop. This is an opportunity for individuals or delegations wishing to address the board to be heard. There is a time limit of three minutes per individual and five minutes per group with a total time limit of thirty minutes. Would ask that any speakers addressing the board, please address the board as a whole, not individual board members, and would ask that you identify yourself by name and please provide your address. Public comment period is open. And if you're students, you're welcome simply to identify yourself by name.
Good evening, Dr. Jones and school board representatives. My name is Brandon Walters and I'm this year's Powhatan High School FCCLA president. I am standing here tonight with two other FCCLA and Y Street members, Olivia Hoover and Marielle Phillips. Y Street is the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth Award-winning volunteer initiative for high school students. Since 2004, more than eight thousand Virginia teens have been trained to promote healthy tobacco-free lifestyles. For the past eight years, PHS FCCLA has partnered with Y Street to promote social change and help empower our peers to make better decisions regarding their health. We are extremely proud when Powhatan County became one of the first school divisions to adopt a comprehensive tobacco and vape-free policy for each of the schools in our division. Today, Olivia Hoover represented the Powhatan High School at Governor Northam's bill signing, making each of the schools in Virginia tobacco and vape-free campuses. Powhatan County once again is ahead of the pack, but Dr. Jones, the school board members, we still need your assistance. Vaping is out of control in our school buildings and on our buses. Not only is this practice dangerous for our peers, but soon it will be an illegal act. As a student organization concerned with the health and well-being of our peers and their families, we will continue to do what we can to raise awareness and to educate our peers on the dangers of tobacco and e-cigarettes. But we are looking to you for stricter policies and consequences to assist in this fight. Shayla Daniels spoke recently at our state leadership conference about the dangers of being in a fog about vaping. We urge you, your administrators, and guidance counselors to come up with a plan to combat this growing problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, public comment period is open.
Good evening. My name is Callie Ramey. I reside at 3403 Upper River Way. I'm a senior at Powhatan High School and I have attended Powhatan County Public Schools from K through 12th grade. And as the year wraps up, I've had time to reflect on my life as a student in Powhatan County Public Schools. And graduation's approaching and I've really taken this time to reflect. I cannot be more grateful for my time at Powhatan County Public Schools. The education relationships I've developed over the years are memories I can never forget and teachers that I've had who impacted me for the rest of my life. I feel very blessed to have had these teachers that have supported, cared, and invested in me. I know that all counties are not as blessed as mine and I feel, for that, I feel very lucky. I wanted to take this time to thank each and every one of you, the school board, my administrators, the teachers, and the bus drivers. I know that the work you put into this takes a lot of time and I could not be more grateful for the care that you have in your profession. Next year, I will be majoring in computer science at the United States Naval Academy, but I know without a doubt Powhatan County Public Schools will always have a place in my heart and for that, I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and thank you to all of our students who participated in the public comment period. Any further comments? All right, with that, I'll bring public comment period to a close. Dr. Jones, I believe we have a presentation this evening.
We do. We have a student presentation this evening. I'm going to ask Mr. John Ringstaff to come to the podium and introduce the students. Mr. Ringstaff is assistant principal at Powhatan High School and is the Advanced College Academy administrator. And I think he's going to introduce three students that are going to be presenting about the Advanced College Academy experience as they get ready to graduate from high school. I think they've already graduated from J. Sergeant Reynolds on Sunday, right? So congratulations on that, earning their associate's degree. You ready, Mr. Ringstaff?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
On behalf of the entire cohort, we have three representatives, Henna Hall, Savannah Post, and Ashley Rissmeyer, who developed a special presentation just to give thanks to the school board for this opportunity, which is the Reynolds PHS College Academy.
So we thought we'd start off with a little reflection of our years in ACA. This was us in freshman and sophomore year. We're little babies. So we had teachers, Ms. Paula Duncan, Ms. Penny Robertson, Ms. Maria Newby, and Mr. Nathaniel Dominey. And we were really clicky. We really didn't function as a unit. We were strangers and it wasn't a very cohesive unit. But we were able to learn AP-level skills at a young age as freshmen. Not a whole lot of students take APs as freshmen. And we also learned self-advocacy and accountability. And yeah, so it was a learning experience the first couple of years.
Okay. I'm here to present about our junior year where things really started to change. So I have a picture here. This year, we kind of learned to depend on each other more. So we learned how to trust one another as students and as peers. And we became even more than that. We started to become not just peers, but friends. We were growing from what we had been during middle school and forming deeper friendships. And through this ACA program, we were able to be with one another for longer periods of time and it just helped those blossoming friendships. Not only this, this is the year that we started doing our dual enrollment classes, which introduced us to actual college workloads. Through the teachers that helped us were James McManus, Stephanie Werke, Nancy Taylor, and Nishay Jones. Each of them helped us combat our new challenging things that we would be facing during this challenging time in our lives.
Okay. And then our final year, senior year, there we are with Ms. Taylor. Yep. Okay, so this year, we kind of learned about punctuality and how we needed to make sure that we were turning in all our assignments on time, making sure that we showed up to class on time. You know, all that good stuff. And we really learned how to keep our balance with school and, you know, extracurriculars and on top of applying to college, too. There was a lot going on this year, so we really learned how to multitask and get a lot of things done in a short time span. And this year, we really came together and we finally kind of became, I think, what we'd all describe as a family. We started actually interacting outside of school, you know, getting to know each other on a personal level besides just being what we once referred to ourselves as work proximity associates. So, yeah, and then after high school, this is going to help us in the workplace a lot because we're going to be able to, you know, learn how to bond with our coworkers and function as a group better and, you know, just be able to do a lot of stuff at the same time. Oh, yeah, this is me, too. Okay. And so next year, we have two people who will be attending GMU, three going to Liberty, four VCU, one Southeastern, one SCAD, two UVA, one UR, three Tech, one Randolph-Macon, one Belmont, one CNU, one Bon Secours Memorial College of Nursing, and one JTCC. So we're going all across the state, all down the East Coast. Everyone's going where they wanted to go.
So this is a little about where I'm going. ACA, unfortunately, at the University of Richmond, since it's a private institution, it won't necessarily help me as much as it might help some other people. I'm intended as a, or I applied as an international business major and I'm kind of undecided, but if I were at any other college, this would help me. I always knew that I wanted to do arts and sciences and that's really what ACA is intended for because it's not a whole lot of math and science. Now, I am negotiating with the university, trying to advocate for the ACA program, and even if nothing happens, though, ACA, I don't regret it one bit. It was a fantastic time of my life. It greatly improved my college, I mean, my high school experience and I think it provided me a lot of college skills that I wouldn't have otherwise gotten.
All right, so I'll just present my experience, which is actually a little different. George Mason University is willing to accept pretty much all of my credits, I think. So that is a major advantage above anyone else going to said school. I am planning on majoring in computer game design. I found my passion this past year and I realized that this is the direction I want to take my life and the ACA has allowed me to kind of jump-start my career. I'll be able to go into college and do exactly what I want to do, starting right away. And I think that's great. And through the program that I got in at GMU, or GMU, excuse me, I'll actually be able to get internships and jobs through the program I'm in by the time I'm in my senior year. So I really think that ACA has put me on a path to success and given me all the tools I need to get where I need to go.
Okay. And I will be going to the University of Virginia. I was accepted into the School of Engineering and I intend on majoring in systems engineering. And, you know, since it is an associate's of social sciences, it's not really applicable towards the STEM fields. But after looking into the credit transfers a little bit more, I realized that I actually won't have to take any of my mandatory electives my first year and maybe second year, too. Bio 101 will transfer for my required math-science elective and the Spanish courses are going to transfer for my humanities elective. So I'm just taking the calculus, physics, you know, all the engineering stuff that you have to do. And this year was by far UVA's most competitive application process. Only twenty-four percent of applicants were offered admission. And so this program really helped me to be a more competitive applicant and to give me a leg up over people who are just doing normal AP curriculum. So on behalf of ourselves and the ACA students below and in the audience back there. Oh, yeah. Why don't you guys come up here? Olivia Aston, Pierce Bailey, Cole Burton, Jeremy Dodd, Elena Douglas, Christian Hardy, Rebecca Hicks, Jenna Jarosinski, Zachary Jasper, Booklin Laza, Charlotte Mead, Riley Nickerson, Riley Roberts, Noah Salino, Ashley Sykes, Ashley Travillion, Sarah Wood, and Hannah Worsham. And us. And Blair McAdier.
I think we're going to get some pictures and we're going to roll right into our recognition. So if the school board would like, if we want to go down and maybe as the ACA students are coming offstage, we can congratulate them.
We're going to do recognitions now. If everybody can stay in their seats through recognition. Can we finish recognitions? If you'd like to leave, we would be happy to give you a break. So if you need to leave or you don't want to stay in the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome to. But so that everybody has their chance to do recognition. And through this portion, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Our first recognition of the evening is our Powhatan High School students who have been nominated for the Lexus of Richmond Leadership Award. We have four student athletes who have been selected as weekly winners in the Lexus of Richmond Leadership Award. The program celebrates the most talented scholar athletes in the Richmond region and qualifies them for a $10,000 Lexus Leadership Scholarship. Our four winners this year are, and this is, I think, a record to have four winners. This is phenomenal. Week thirteen, the winner was Maggie Salamansky. Week eighteen winner was Callie Ramey. Week twenty-three winner was Caitlin Hicks. And week twenty-seven winner, Jacob Moss. Congratulations to these student athletes and all they've accomplished on and off the field. Congratulations to these student athletes and all they've accomplished on and off the field. Our next award is for our FCCLA program, State Conference Students. At Powhatan High School, I'm going to ask our sponsors, Jane Brown and Mark Robertson, to come forward to help with the recognition. The Powhatan High School Family Career and Community Leaders of America was recognized at the Virginia FCCLA State Conference in Virginia Beach, April fourth through seventh. Seven students attended this conference along with advisors Jane Brown and Mark Robertson during spring break. Senior Brandon Walters competed in the job interview event and won gold and the right to compete at the national level. Freshman Shayla Daniels competed and won gold in illustrated talk. Seniors Marielle Phillips and Tony Grubbs competed in the culinary arts competition and won silver, each receiving over $22,000 in scholarships from various culinary colleges and universities. Junior Olivia Hoover participated as a student evaluator for a state middle school competition. And freshman Kylie Brooks, freshmen Kylie Brooks and Trista Domer served as state star event attendants during competitions. The chapter as a whole was recognized as an outstanding, gold-level chapter, having successfully completed projects in every national program. Thirty-eight members received state and national recognition as FCCLA Power of One completers, the most of any chapter in the state. PHS FCCLA was also recognized for their collaboration with Y Street and is a mini-grant recipient of the Virginia FCCL Leadership Foundation. Congratulations to the following students, if you'd please come forward to be recognized. Brandon Walters, Marielle Phillips, Tony Grubbs, Olivia Hoover, Shayla Daniels, Kylie Brooks, and Trista Domer. On March 23rd, Virginia Future Business Leaders of America held the... On March 23rd, Virginia Future Business Leaders of America held the first annual middle school-level state leadership conference at Henrico High School. The event hosted onsite competitive events, workshops, and a closing keynote speaker. Approximately 15 middle schools from Virginia and 150 middle school students participated in the statewide event. Two Powhatan Middle School students participated in pre-conference testing events and attended the onsite workshops and the closing ceremony. We are excited to announce Nathan Anderson placed second in the Digital Citizenship Objective Competitive Event, sponsored by Krista Fairman. Congratulations, Nathan. Our next recognition was for Jordan Winall, but she'll be recognized at our June event. Our Support Staff of the Year, Volunteers of the Year, and Transportation Members of the Year, we'd like to recognize them today. This month, PCPS employees were able to recognize the important contributions of transportation employees, support staff, and volunteers by nominating those individuals for building-level awards of Support Staff of the Year and Volunteer of the Year, as well as the Division-level Transportation Award of Bus Driver and Mechanic of the Year. Each of the school's support staff personnel will recognize first. From Flat Rock Elementary, Ms. Stephanie Epps, Parent Coordinator. From Powhatan Elementary, Ms. Amy Wingfield, Instructional Assistant. From Pocahontas Elementary, Ms. Regina Saba, Instructional Assistant. From Powhatan Middle School, Ms. Roxanne Wentworth, Instructional Assistant. And from Powhatan High School, Mrs. Pam Ross, Instructional Assistant. Now, our Volunteers of the Year, from Flat Rock Elementary School, Ms. Lori Lawson. From Powhatan Elementary School, Mr. Jim Partridge and Ms. Butt Partridge. From Pocahontas Elementary, Ms. Margaret Durbeck. From Powhatan Middle School, Mr. Tom Walton. And from Powhatan High School, Mr. Greg Chester and Mr. LD Breeden. And from the Transportation Department, Bus Drivers of the Year, Ms. Teresa Neese and Ms. Sherry Gleason. Mechanic of the Year, Mr. Mike Parker. And our Substitute Bus Driver of the Year, Mr. Perry Cosby. Today at 4 o'clock, the media release went out about this one from the John Marshall Foundation. Mr. Stocker was recognized as the recipient of the John Marshall Foundation Teacher of the Year Award on May 1st at the Law Day Luncheon. One middle school and one high school teacher is selected for the award each year. Teachers are selected based on their knowledge and enthusiasm for the US Constitution, as evidenced through activities inside and outside of the classroom. Mr. Stocker submitted a personal statement and letters of reference. We are very proud of him to represent PCPS with this teaching award and as he comes down, I'm sure he will have his pocket Constitution with him. Come on down, Mr. Stocker. Mrs. Butler is not here this evening, but we wanna recognize PHS Cosmetology Teacher, Ms. Pat Butler, who was recently named Virginia Skills USA Advisor of the Year at the recent Skills USA Competition in April. For those of you who don't know, Skills USA is a partnership of students, teachers, and an industry working together to ensure America has a skilled workforce. Thank you for her hard work and dedication in building a culture of success for our PHS Skills USA program.
Thank you. Now's the time you can leave if you want to. But you're welcome to stay. Oh, that was good. Good recognitions.
You get slowly, right? You gotta have to stay for this part now and...
So you didn't even know we were doing this?
No. No, no, no. So...
Interesting.
It's gotten considerably quieter in here. Alright, so at this point, let's move forward with our agenda. So we now have the consent agenda. And Dr. Jones, you wanna walk us through the items on the consent agenda, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Well, there's several items on the consent agenda that the board can choose to vote on and a block. First item is the monthly financial report, which is information, as well as the CIP Financial Report. Our facilities update on how facilities are used, as well as our regular facilities update on work that's being done in the facilities. We have some overnight field trips, four of them, that are mainly to summer events for teams and clubs. And then we have some donations that the board could accept. And finally, we have the Personnel Docket and the addendum that was discussed during our executive session. So we are looking for approval of the consent agenda. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Alright, do any members have questions regarding any of the items in the consent agenda? And if there are, there are none, we can consider them in a block.
Was there one correction you wanted to say from the email? Or was that already made?
Refresh my memory, Ms. Winall.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
The train, wasn't it, Mr. Jones?
The CIP, the report in the agenda is correct.
Oh, okay, so it's just, it's already correct?
We updated it. We found, it was posted Thursday, we sent you an email that had been updated because of an error in the report. So the correct report's here for the public.
Okay.
So the information advertised is correct.
Correct.
So the public's had an opportunity to see the correct information.
Yep.
And what we're acting on tonight is accurate.
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda in a block, please respond with a "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Dr. Jones, Superintendent's report, sir?
Yes, sir. First item is the, we're looking for approval of our local plan and budget for the Perkins Act, otherwise known as the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century Act. Our local plan and budget on how we propose to spend that funding is attached and we are looking for approval at this time. Dr. Tibbs is here, if the board has any specific questions about any of the items in the plan or the budget.
Alright, do we have questions for Dr. Jones or Dr. Tibbs regarding this item?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Starting with slide 25. It says about, I just wanted to know what is considered non-traditional career preparation, enrollment, and completion?
So a non-traditional designation, if you will, is, for example, if we've got young men or males that are going into the nursing profession. Or if we've got females that are interested in welding fabrication. So it's traditionally air, program areas or courses that you would predominantly see males or females taken, but the times have changed and student interest lead them that way.
Oh, okay, thank you. And then the other one, on slide 31, I was wondering, the veterinarian program that we have, isn't that CTE?
It is.
And where does that go? It was on slide 31, I didn't see it specifically, I didn't know if it went...
These are plans of study. For example, we introduced firefighting this year. And so as part of this requirement for one of these STEM schedules, or CTM schedules, if you will, is to outline a plan of study so that a program area, it outlines what they do all the way through high school and then takes them into post-secondary. So we work very closely with our liaison at Reynolds Community College to outline that plan of study. So the veterinarian program, the vet science program, is built into the agriculture program under the vet sciences. We just have not identified it as a plan of study in here, but we do have an identified plan of study, starting when they enter that program area all the way through.
Okay, thank you. And then I wanted to know, are we still going to be sharing with Guchlin on our cosmetology and, what was, is it big vehicles or...
Heavy equipment.
Heavy equipment, yes.
Yes, sorry, that's...
Same thing.
Yeah.
It's the same thing.
Okay.
Yes, we do, we do still have that partnership and the number of students is still kinda up in the air at this point, but we still will have that partnership and have that opportunity for students to be able to go over there and take heavy equipment if they'd like, or have their students come over here for cosmetology.
Okay, great, thank you.
Alright, other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, if we'll go to page 55 of the document. Hate to sound like a broken record, but I'm a bottom-line person here. On page 55, you see the preponderance of what our grant is paying for, or you see what we pay for CTE in terms, not total, but it's close to total. And you look at our person, our teacher salaries, instructional stuff down there at the bottom of the page, it looks like it's well over $850,000 there total. Just wanna point out again, it's very nice to get $38,000 from the federal government, but we'd really like to see the federal government step up and do a little bit better job of supporting something that everybody says is critical to our workforce needs. But, you know, like I say, I'm appreciative of $38,000. It's an awful long document, an awful lot of Ts to cross and Is to dot to get $38,000 from the federal government. But thank you for doing it and I'm glad that this division and our Board of Supervisors support this program to the degree we do, in spite of a little bit we get from the federal government.
And if I can add on to what Mr. Cole just said, the reason that you have this tonight for approval is because the strengthening of career and technical education, which is now known as Perkins Five, that has not changed over the past seven years. So the federal government last year changed it and they did put some regulations and did add some additional Is to dot and some Ts to cross because there is an initiative through advanced CTE that is trying to go up through the federal government to increase the funding for CTE because of what Mr. Cole just said, we're trying to build these programs and trying to provide students with opportunities to give them workplace experience and make them workplace-ready.
Alright, other questions or comments?
Can you, would you mind going to page 30 just for a moment? And I just have a question on page 30, and that's your advisory board composition. And in looking at that, and I may be reading this incorrectly, but I thought that in reading this, it says we've got a list, three, one for each of three different career and technical education programs, business and industry. So with the exception of business and industry, we must list three, one for each of three different programs. Do, I'm just asking, do we have enough people listed? Business and industry satisfy the requirements of this chart?
We do. We have to meet the group letter ID in order for this document to pass. Our composition of our advisory council does not have to be totally on here. This just has to list all the individuals that have to be consulted at some point throughout this entire process.
Alright, thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Alright, that's the only question I had on that document. Any further?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this grant application.
Are motions, there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please respond with a "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Dr. Jones?
Yep. Dr. Tibbs, you can stay up there if you'd like. Next item is to consider approval of renewal of our contract for custodial services with SSC Service Solutions. There is an amount, annual inflation adjustment of 2.2% in this, and this would give us another year on our contract with Service Solutions. So Dr. Tibbs works with Service Solutions as part of his other main job responsibility with facilities. So he's here to answer any questions the board may have, but we are looking for approval of this contract moving forward. for approval of this contract moving forward. I know that from my perspective, I've heard less complaints about SSC this year than in any year in the past, and they seem to have really stepped up and done a very nice job this year. I know the reports that the principals give monthly to SSC have shrunk dramatically, so things are going as well as they have since they've been on the job with us, but, Dr. Tibbs can answer any other specific questions you may have.
All right, do we have, Mrs. Emel?
Okay, well, that's great. What do you attribute the less complaints to, Dr. Tibbs? What do you think is changed?
Their, their contract manager meets with the facility administrator, whoever the principals have decided is the facility administrator, meets with them on a regular basis at the school level. Open lines of communication are always there. We're communicating, I'm communicating with them on a regular basis, administrators are communicating with them on a regular basis. They have added an assistant contract manager, so we now have two full-time contract managers here within our division that are able to go between the buildings and between the facilities to ensure that things are being taken care of as they need to be taken care of. Their response time has increased dramatically over the past couple of years, they've done very well with that. So I just attribute it to open lines of communication and the constant feedback that we're able to give them, and they're able to take it and fix it.
Well, I'm so glad to hear that, because as you know, we weren't so happy at the beginning, and I really appreciate the efforts of you and your crew and the principals and everybody working together so that we could get something positive, you know, with them. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Emel. Other questions or comments? All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the renewal contract for custodial services with Southeast Service Corporation, SSC Service Solutions.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Dr. Jones?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Tibbs. Next item is consider approval for Virginia School Board Association policy updates. These are the policies the board received at our April meeting for information. Dr. Parker is here to answer any questions that you may have, but we are looking for approval of these policies at this time.
All right, do we have questions for Dr. Jones or Dr. Parker?
Chairman, I have one question.
All right.
I think it's just a typo. It's on policy G A B I I B E A, it's acceptable use policy. Page two of that.
What page are you on?
It was number seven, the users.
Okay.
G A B I I B E A.
All right.
Under number seven, user.
Number seven, right there on the second page. Let's see, where is it? It says, uh, that's not it. I I B E A. Anyway, it says protection of data, data use, should it be protection of data user?
It should be, and I made a note for that.
Okay, well, great minds, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was the only question I had.
Ms. Wilson, forward and meet your email.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, we'll make sure we get that corrected.
Thank you. And then on question I I A B, supplemental materials selection adoption, are we strong enough there? Do we have enough language in there, since we're not using textbooks to any large degree anymore? You know, it's a pretty general policy, you know, is there, you know, maybe there's something in regulations about what we use, but I just want to make sure we've got enough in there to protect, to make sure we're, that we're doing our due diligence in all the things that we now use in classrooms.
Yep, and we're working on a regulation now, it's, we drafted it and we're reviewing it based on some other divisions that we've surveyed, so that's where the meat of the specifics is going to be. So we feel good about the policy itself and the regulation will kind of back that up.
Thank you. That's, I will comment so ahead, Mr. Cole.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cole. Other questions or comments?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I didn't see the CBA. Oh, we took that one out?
Yeah, we took out three of them. Took out all three of those that I don't.
It was, it's received in the packet for this month, it was in, I think it's in the next, the set that you received tonight. So those three will be for next month? Correct.
Right.
Okay, and then what about the one, the EFD from last time? That we didn't have? Are we going to have that next month too? That's in next month as well. Okay. The ones that have been corrected for you to receive tonight to review. Okay. And then, I just had one other question, the IGAK, Alternatives to Animal Dissection. Yes. It says the superintendent has the alternatives. I was just wondering, that topic came up at my household, and, so what are the alternatives?
I don't know, I would ask Ms. Libby Kitten, our science specialist, to give me a list of alternatives, and I would then approve.
So that people don't, you don't have to. You don't have to do it. Oh, but you learned so much.
It's an important learning skill, we want people to do it, that's why they have to come to me to get approval.
Okay, good, good.
Apparently.
Okay.
That's the policy. A vegetarian alternative? Dissect a cucumber?
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll ask Ms. Kitten when I see her next. Thank you.
All right, further questions or comments regarding the policy? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion?
I make a motion we accept the new policy updates, as listed in our agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor of approving the revised policy updates, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Next agenda item is to consider approval for a couple of religious exemption requests we receive. I recommend that the school board approve requests for release from compulsory attendance, student case RE 181924 and RE 181925, based on bona fide religious belief. This is under Virginia Code 22 dot 1 dash 254.
Do we have a motion regarding these two requests for religious exemption?
Chairman, I'm moved that we accept the request for RE 181924 and RE 181925, release from compulsory attendance.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Next item is for school board approval of a school bus and a school bus driver for Richmond Head Start preschool program, since the Head Start program is technically not a PCPS program. Per policy, we need approval for them to go on a field trip.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the use of a school bus and bus driver?
Motion is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Next item is to consider approval, appointment of school board clerk and additional school board deputy clerk, Ms. Linda Hockaday, who's going to be taking over for Michelle Wilson. We need approval to add her to financial account signature cards and to have her bonded for her new position. We would like to have her effective July 1, 2019. We're also recommending adding Ms. Kelsey Birch, who's been with us the last few meetings, to be appointed as an additional deputy school board clerk, with her compensation based on hourly rate for meetings that she attends.
All right, discussion regarding these items? All right, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the appointment of school board clerk, Mrs. Linda Hockaday, and additional school board deputy clerk, Ms. Kelsey Birch.
All right, have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Congratulations. All right.
The next item is, and this is information only, this is the memorandum of understanding for Powhatan County Parks and Recs Department to use the Powhatan Middle School gym building. This is a draft of the MOU that we have worked out with Parks and Rec and county staff. The school board, we're asking the school board to review this, let us know if you have any feedback or questions or concerns with that, and then we will work on that and bring that back to you next month for approval.
All right, and I would ask, so this has also been provided to the board of supervisors for their review?
Yes, it has.
All right. All right, any discussion at this point?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cole?
I know this is a draft, and this is a place to start, and I appreciate the work that's been done. It's a great deal for the county, I'm not quite sure it's a great deal for us. You know, we're basically maintaining, we're basically still paying for just about everything. And the county is basically now going to have full, have full use of it, and school, school groups are now have to go in the queue with everybody else to use the building. I'm not, I'm not 100% happy with that. You know, we've been talking now for several months and years about the transition of these buildings to the county at some point, the ones we're not going to use. I would rather see us, if we're going to start transitioning, you know, let's break the mold and transition the building to them, let them have it lock, stock, and barrel, let them take care of it. I just hate for that money to come out of our budget to take care of a facility that we're going to have second or third, you know, we're down, way down the line to, to be, to use it. Now, I'm only one board member, but at the same, you know, I just, you know, I know we're taking baby steps here, and maybe this is the right baby step to take, and maybe we can come back later on. If we're going to have this agreement, then I'd say, then I'd say let's make it for a year, or make it for some, some specific link of time, so we can come back to it and review it at the end of the, end of, end of 12 months, if we want to change it, change it then. I mean, I can live with that, but at the same time, like I say, I'm one board member, I'm expressing my concerns, that, you know. All the money comes from the same place, in the end, I understand that, but the money to care for this building is going to, is going to, you know, to large, is a large part of electricity is going to come out of our budget.
Dr. Tibbs, you want to respond to Mr. Cole's concern, since you've been working with county on this?
Your concerns are incredibly valid. We've had several conversations, and this is only for a year, we will come back and revisit this in a year. As the repurpose of Pocahontas Middle School transpires, they are actually going to be putting a great deal of upfront cost to retrofit the building for, for what their purpose is. The only thing that is required, or that we will be required to take care of after they occupy the building and take over the building, is the HVAC, which, that's a big unit on top of the roof. We all know the mechanical equipment can go down at any point in time. We hope that that doesn't happen, because that is a fairly newer unit. But yes, you're correct, it is, this is only for a year, we will revisit it. They are also working on a lease agreement that we will bring to you as well, because the feeling is, is if they are putting money from their side of the fence, so to speak, into the building, we need to have a lease agreement for them understanding exactly what the parameters are. So they're, they're working on that as well. The only thing that I can say at this point that we have definitively decided is, what's in this MOU and the Edmon meter that will be going on the electricity, so that we can charge them for the electricity that they will be using. Because they will be using the building during certain hours and have certain functions going on, we do feel that they need to be paying for that. So we will be charging the county for the use of the electricity going into the building. We felt like that was a better way to do it, as opposed to getting Dominion to come out there and run new lines and so forth and so on, given that that would be a costly venture.
Thank you for clarifying that. I, like I say, I can live with it for a year, but at the same, same time, I would really like to see us figure out exactly what the process is going to be for transferring this property to the county at some point in the near future.
And I will tell you, there is, there is overarching concern on their part, that they are, they don't know what the building is going to entail, they don't know what the uses of the building is going to entail, because they don't have community groups knocking at the door wanting to use the building, and quite frankly, they don't have the staff to be able to staff the building all the, all the hours that they want to have it open in order for it to be utilized, because they've got to have somebody on premise at all times, and school staff is not going to be on, on premise while Parks and Rec has events and things like that going on.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Dr. Jones?
Don't we already have an MOU with Parks and Rec where our school teams have preferential right to use their facilities?
That's exactly the question I was going to ask. I thought we had probably.
We have an MOU with them for field usage at all of our schools, and school teams have first preference in that MOU for like school fields at Pocahontas Middle School Field prior to this, Powhatan Middle School Field and so forth.
Even like Fighting Creek and things like that?
We don't have an MOU with them for that, no.
I, I would agree with Mr. Cole then, I think that needs to be included here. We're going to maintain.
I agree.
Yeah, what about the field, don't we use the fields over there now?
Which fields? Fighting Creek?
No, at the, the old middle, Pocahontas Middle School. We do. So we do have first priority.
Well, because they're, they're ours prior to this.
Today, they're ours.
Yeah, but, yeah. So I, yeah, that's the same thing after Mr. Cole spoke, I, the priority over, that county activities have priority over school, schools, that, that, that shouldn't be.
It's, you know, it's the second paragraph, and we could pick up a words there, it says all activities sponsored by the county shall be given priority over schools once the facilities and grounds have been turned over to the county. Now, they technically have not been turned over to the county unless this MOU says they're turned over to, you know, I don't know. So, you know, once again, I do have some issues with that. If it's, if we're, if it's still technically our ownership.
Right.
Then we ought to have first priority over that.
The third paragraph as well, Mr. Cole.
Yeah, and it's stated again somewhere down further in the document.
Well, it's activities sponsored by County Parks and Recreation shall be given priority of all, over all activities, including school activities.
Mm hmm, yeah.
So in the spirit of, in the spirit of this discussion, we're not acting on this tonight, we're receiving this for informational purposes. A little feedback from our discussion, as we, I think, I think I hear some concerns about these two paragraphs.
I will share that with Ms. Carter tomorrow.
And thank you for doing it. I mean, you're, you're, you're charting, you're going on uncharted ground here, so.
The spirit of this, I think, at least from my perspective as one board member, is we want to work with the board of supervisors in moving this to the future, and I think this is feedback and concerns we're expressing, and those are only my words as one individual board member. Mr. Kunkka, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Dr. Tibbs?
I just want to echo my agreement, is what this MOU is describing, it shouldn't contain a paragraph describing something that was going to happen in the future, it's not part of this agreement, so I think that should be struck altogether. And the third paragraph sounds to me like that's effective immediately, and I would challenge that if the grounds still belonged to us, so paragraphs two and three, from my perspective.
Well, I think the MOU is for the gym building and the fields, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what it reads.
I will send that to Ms. Carter and let her know. I think, again, in the spirit of partnering with them, we certainly can continue to do that, the MOU is fairly clear, but I do think that given the uncertainty of what the building is going to be used for, once they finish with their repurpose and renovations, they certainly can be amenable to that sort of request that we have in terms of allowing school groups.
So, so Dr. Tibbs, am I, am I, it was my understanding that we have some school teams that practice over there, and that's pretty much where they practice during the school year for some, some sports, is that right?
On the fields, yes, sir.
So, I mean, those, those teams are dependent upon those fields in order to practice, correct?
It's predominantly the rectangular field, lacrosse uses that rectangular field during the springtime.
So it would be critical to those, the school teams that they continue to have priority in the activities of those fields.
Just lacrosse.
Yeah, even if we wrote it in that it was just the existing teams that we had would maintain the ability to use those fields, then I personally would feel better.
I would as well, and that, this may simply be a matter of an unintended consequence, some language unintended, but if we could clarify it, I think that'd be very helpful. But if we could clarify it, I think that'd be very helpful.
If I could, while I'm up here, I'd like to give you a real quick update in regards to the Pocahontas Middle School repurpose. If you recall, last month, we talked about the, the roof replacement for that specific building. Wanted to let you know that the bids came in last week and we, Dr. Jones, Mr. Johns and myself met, looked at those bids. We ultimately only received two bids after putting it back out to bid. But both of those companies that rebid were the two bids that we had previously received, which we were pleased with, but then we were a little disappointed because we did only receive two. But one of the companies, and the company that we've ultimately chosen to go with is a local company here in Richmond. And so we're working on the contract with them now. So I'm hoping to be able to have a contract for you to approve in June, so we can go ahead and get that off the ground. And that is only for the occupied spaces of the building. We are not looking at a, at a total building.
And that would, and that would fit within our existing budget that we had to do the roof. So we would be able to re-roof, including the parts that the county is using and that we would use, would all have new roof over it, excuse me, for those identified spaces for our budgeted number.
So that's the gym, and then where the school board offices are gonna be, and then where the Christmas mother is, and the, and double ACP?
Yes.
All of that.
The one thing we're looking at is the Christmas mother is we're gonna inspect that roof in the cafeteria 'cause right now what Dr. Tibbs has said and his staff have said is that roof is still in good shape. So we're, we're gonna bring them out just to evaluate whether they think it needs to be replaced or not. So it may just, we may hold off on it until we're finished with the project, make sure we have funding for the other needs that we have in the renovation work that we're doing. And then if we have funding left over, do that roof over the Christmas mother, if the roofing company says it's still in good shape.
There are also alternatives in terms of reconditioning the roof that do not require it to be taken off and put back down as the, the other parts are being done. So we can look at reconditioning the roof and getting another ten or fifteen years out of the existing roof that's there. So that's, that's another option that we're gonna look at.
But all the other areas you mentioned would be, have a brand-new roof, and those areas all needed.
Okay, and then, are we, so the county has, May first was the day that they had the, the gym and the N double ACP and the Christmas mother and, and everybody other than the school board offices. They're, they're all set?
The Christmas mother has already moved into place. They already have their items in the cafeteria. We've changed the locks on that specific section of the building, so they only have access to that section of the building 'cause I didn't want any issues with theft or anything like that. We have a key, of course. So Christmas mother's in place. The county did, I gave them the keys to the gym space on May the first, but they are very much like we are, and they're not going in and doing any sort of renovations or anything until we get the, the roof contract under our belt and get things going there because we don't want that sort of construction to mess up anything that they're doing internally. So they, they do have the keys, but they have not mobilized or done any sort of work of any kind in there at, at this point.
And so, did we have any knowledge of, of how the tour went with the N double ACP with the county or?
The only conversation that, that I have heard that came out of that is the, the N double ACP and the county did meet over there and that their original thought of, when you go into the gym building and it circles around to go towards the actual gym space, the county was thinking about putting some storefront glass there to separate those two areas. From their conversations, it was my understanding that they now have decided not to put that storefront glass there because the N double ACP group wants it to be a complete flow-through because they want the foot traffic. So their conversations have been fruitful, and I, I think that they are, everybody's on, on an even keel and have a general understanding as to who needs what and what needs to be done.
So if I get calls now that all goes to the county, to, to, and it's who?
Ramona Carter.
Ramona Carter gets all the calls?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Tibbs.
You're welcome.
All right, other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next item is to receive information. School board is receiving information on amending and restating Powhatan County Public Schools' voluntary retirement savings program, 403B. This is in response to a change in IRS amendment that is requiring us to go back and re-approve admin partners as the third-party administrator for our 403B plan. This is information at this time. We'll bring it back to you next month for approval. If you have any questions or need additional information, Mr. Johns is here at this point, can answer questions or give you additional information if you need it.
All right, questions or comments?
So we used to have this?
We, we have had a voluntary, voluntary retirement savings program for birthdays, and we offer that to, as a voluntary program for our employees to pay rule deduction because their contributions are pre-taxed. And so we've had it for years and years. The, this board even back ten years ago adopted a plan. When we first put it in place, IRS didn't require an adopted plan because the code allowed it. Then in 2009, they came out and wanted school divisions and other employers to adopt a plan, which we've done. What IRS has done just recently is they have expanded language on the plan document and agreement just so that it is more clear when an employee reads it exactly what's covered in it. We are in no way changing any response, any benefit of the plan. All of that is staying the same. There are shared responsibilities that we have to do between the third-party administrator, admin partners, the employer and the, the firms that offer these. None of those responsibilities are changing at all. IRS is just requiring employers to amend this plan so that we're using the updated forms that are more clear, and that's it.
It's really just an administrative change. It's not really any change, and it's not us bringing it.
Well, I saw the restatement.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, thank you.
All right, other questions or comments? All right, so this is informational tonight. No questions or comments. All right.
And the last item that I have for the board tonight is you're receiving information for the, our 2018, 2019 safety audit report. Attached are the outcomes of the safety audits in accord, according, in accordance with the Code of Virginia. And this report is used for us to talk about strengths and areas to address. Individual school findings are listed as well, and we've already begun addressing these through our school-based and school division-wide safety committees. So this is for your information at this time. If you have questions, Ms. Wajiki is here, kinda spearheads this for us. She's happy to help answer any questions that you have. We did not include the entire, our entire crisis plan or safety plans in this because it does have sensitive information that, that we don't make public. But certainly there are, there's information for the board to review.
All right, discussion? All right, so this is informational in nature. No questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Moves us to the next item on the agenda. Items for discussion, comments by the board. Mr. Kunkka, would you like to start us off, sir?
Sure. I'm gonna take the opportunity to do a little bragging. This Saturday, I have the pleasure of attending the graduation of my daughter, Karina, from Kenyon College. She's graduating with a molecular biology undergrad. She scored in greater than the ninety-ninth percentile on the DAT, which is a dental aptitude test. She's looking into dentistry, so very proud. She's on, published in three papers, and her professor wants to publish her thesis, so that would, that would make four. And the next five years financially, Karina, are on you. Thank you.
Oh, congratulations, Dad.
Something to brag about, sir.
It is.
Congratulations. All right, Mrs. Ema.
Ah, let's see. I went to the senior night of the lacrosse team. And as you remember, was it four years, five years ago, Mr. Palmer and Mr. Somerville came to me and wanted their boys to play lacrosse for the, their high school. And so it was very, it was just nice to see that it all was there and right at the high school. And they, they, they were doing really well 'cause I, you know, at the beginning, they lost a lot. They, they told me they lost a lot and they were not good, and, you know, so it was really nice to see how far they've gone in, in as many years, so. Then we had the celebration of the horse and ag expo, which was interesting to, to, to be volunteering at this year. And then quickly changed and went to the, into the woods play that evening. Of course, you know, we were sweating all day. Oh, oh, I'll let Mr., well, you're gonna say something, aren't you?
Probably not.
Oh, well, then I, I'll say it now. And Mr. Walters was asked to be in the dunk tank. And, and some students really threw a lot of balls, huh? Got you, what? We won't mention names, but she came back and asked me for more money, so.
Yeah, that's correct. That would be an email, yes. North of forty times I was dunked, so.
Forty, okay, well.
More than forty. So I'm, I'm a good sport of nothing.
You are a very good sport, and you know, it was very hot that day, and that must've been fun, yeah.
But we clearly have very good baseball and softball coaches in our county.
Clearly.
They're very accurate.
Uh-huh. Okay, so then, as I wasn't in the dunk tank, I had to get the quick shower and into the woods play. You all know that I loved Legally Blonde last year. I just thought, how can these people just surpass that? But they did, and they had like, I believe it was three or four fairy tales going on at the same time, and the singing and the acting, and it was just very well done, and I certainly enjoyed that. Then last week, I got to visit the watershed field trip at Fighting Creek Park. Mrs. Anderson from the ecology classes, their stu, her students put on the, the day along with, let's see, all of our, what do you call, Ms. Kitten and Ms. Perry and Ms.
Stem, stem coaches.
And, and all, and Ms. Engel was there, and so all of our. I'm sorry.
Curriculum coordinators.
Thank you. Curriculum coordinators were helping out. And there was one young man, I believe he said he was a junior, and he, I talked to him and he said that, you know, we get to go outside, you know, now because at the high school, I guess, the, the construction classes made some kind of, I saw it in a picture, some kind of seating in the courtyard. In, in the outdoor classroom. And he really liked that, he said, and he said, you know, we, we don't get recess. And I'm thinking, yeah, you're a junior, you know, you're almost an adult. But I, you know, but it was just really nice that he said this. And then he was excited to have been chosen to be outside that day, and I guess it was for two days. And it was a beautiful day to be outside, and that is the kind of teaching and learning I love to see when we're taking advantage of our local resources in our own county and, and how everybody worked together. It was fabulous. Then the CTE scholarship dinner and presentations. Oh, my gosh. I was telling Dr. Tibbs, this is the first time I got to see the presentations. Usually I only can stay for the dinner and then I have to run off to my committee meeting. But anyway, I got to stay and, oh, wow, I was so glad that I didn't have to make any of the evaluations because there were a lot of good students, and yours was one of them, Mr. Walters. You would've been really proud. I imagine you are now.
I'm always really proud.
That's good. It, it, very nice, very nice, and it just makes you, when you think you've had it, you know, with all these policies and, and those, you know, which I've had up to here with lately, it's nice to know the reason why I, you know, I do this when I see those people, those students do so well and how proud they are of the teachers that have taught them through high school and beyond. They had a lot of, and there's one back here right now, Mrs. Brown, that was mentioned that evening. And, is there anybody else? I don't wanna, yeah, so, yeah, so that, it, it just was a good, good visits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ema. Mr. Cole?
Sure. First thing I wanna do is, those students have, have left at this point, but I, but I do want to compliment the FCC LA students for making their presentation and for Callie Ramey. I've been on the board for almost eight years now, and I don't think I've ever had a student come unsolicited, unprompted to, to thank the board for their support. And it says a lot about the school system, but it also says a lot about her. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of that, and like I said, the FCC LA students. And of course, the, the ACA students. I'm biased and prejudiced towards them because I work with them fairly often. But, but I congratulate them, and that's what we're all about, and, and it's nice to have them here with us. I wanna throw ahead a compliment to the transportation staff and to Dr. Jones. I had a parent call me about a bus route concern, called Dr. Jones, and I think they addressed it within about three or four hours. And he, he called me back and said, I just wanna, he said, I've already thanked Ms. Waltney, but I wanna make sure that, that you know that, that they handled my concern, you know, almost immediately. He was very impressed with the bus driver, stopped by to see him and talk to him personally to get, to get the issue resolved. So thank you for doing that. And the other thing about buses, Dr. Jones and I have had a, a short conversation about looking into stop, stop-arm cameras on our buses. We've had some incidences over with my grandchildren about getting on the bus and cars running by buses that were stopped. You know, and so if we can at least investigate that and see what it costs and maybe get one or two and rotate around to see, see, to make sure that we're, we're doing all we can to protect our students. This last thing is personal and, and, but I do want to, to say it tonight because it, I, I need to, to let people know this. And that is that while I've really enjoyed being on this school board for the last eight years, almost eight years now, and most of those days have been pretty enjoyable, I've made a decision not to seek reelection for the next term. There are lots of, there's been a lot of thought, and it's been in a really an eighteen-month decision. It hadn't been a decision I woke up one morning and said, hey, I'm not gonna do this anymore. But the thing that I, the, the, the thing that I had at the back of my mind when I got into this eight years ago was that I didn't intend to do this the rest of my life. That I came on to serve and I came on to do, to do the best I could, but that there were certainly other people in Powhatan County, and especially in District One, who could do the job as well as I can. And I think there is some real value in sharing this leadership role with other citizens in the county and with other citizens, citizens within District One. And I did not make the decision until I was comfortable that the person that's going to seek the seat is passionate about the schools. I think he's got a background with having two kids in the school. One now is a teacher, that I think he's got the background that he'll make a good school board member. So I wanna spread that leadership around because I think the most valuable thing we learn on a school board is to become advocates for Powhatan County Public Schools. We become more knowledgeable about how our school system works, and that knowledge is power when we go out and talk into, into, in the community. So I'll talk more in December, but I just wanted to make that announcement tonight because I, I did want my fellow board members to hear it directly from me rather than from some other source.
All right, Mr. Cole, thank you for your comments, sir. Thank you for your service. I'm gonna be brief. I'm just gonna say that what I am reminded about almost daily is that the strength of our school system is with the teachers, the staff, the faculty, the people that make it happen. The bricks and mortar are not what make our school system successful. It's the people who work every day with the students, whether it's in the best of their times or the worst of their times. And we are very fortunate in this county to have excellent staff. And as we close another successful school year, or soon to close another successful school year, I just wanna extend my thanks to each of you because I know that it has been a long year. I know that it has been a challenging year for many of you, no matter what job you hold, but we've accomplished a great deal. We have graduation and other things coming up, which is very much a celebration. It's a celebration of the achievements of the students, their family, their friends, but it's also a celebration of the dedication that each of you bring to your job. So thank you for what you do, and thank you for what you'll do in the future. And at that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. And the only thing that I have to say is a reminder, we have many culminating events coming up, but one of my favorite of the year is our Teacher of the Year and Retiree Dinner. That's May twenty-second, five o'clock at Independence, where we will be honoring all of our retirees that have given years of service to Powhatan County Public Schools, as well as our Five Teachers of the Year. It's always a wonderful event where we have a lot, students perform and lots of great stories about people's accomplishments and service to the county. So look forward to seeing many of you at that event, and as we recognize, some very important people in our school division. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jones. And this takes us to our second of our public comment periods for this meeting. This is an opportunity for individuals or delegations wishing to address the board to be heard. There's a time limit of one minute per individual and three minutes per group with a total time limit of fifteen minutes. I would ask that speakers address the board as a whole, not individual board members, and please identify yourself to the board when you speak. Public comment period is open. Once again, public comment period is open. All right, seeing no movement, I'll bring public comment period to a close. Next item on our agenda is adjournment. Does a member have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Is there a second?
A second?
Motion is second. All in favor of adjournment, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, four zero. We are adjourned.
I'll let you know when I find out about that. Okay, I'll let you know. Yeah, 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 the boy. Okay, yep, I'll find out. I'll text you when, with an answer when you come outside.
Can we address the vaping and smoking? How will we do that?
Well, we are.
Right, but I mean, do we need to put that on the agenda for next time, or?